Hey, I'd like to call the meeting to order. A roll call. Councilmember Mersch. Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Black has stepped out. Mayor Protam Derringer.
Here.
Mayor Piper.
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Put your hands over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're just gonna give a second for Dr. Black. Dr. Black? To help Dr. Black.
All right, and thank you guys all for coming. We're gonna start off this meeting with a to talk a little bit about some of the partners that are partners to the city that have really helped us during the utility shut-off. The Rotary Club of Palos Verdes really stepped up helping to provide meals and helping with donations and contributions that it gave up to 23 grants to residents of the city. We also have the Rolling Hills Community Association was great on community meals and also helping with the communication to the residents. The block captains, we're super fortunate to have the block captains that we have are super involved and they helped set everything up, put everything together, help communicate with everybody what was going on. Because the people in our community were going through a really rough time of what trying to deal with it, and so as a community, everyone really stepped up to make that happen. And then the Women's Club is always on top of it and they put all that together. And when you have those many people who really care about our community and really help it go in the right direction, that really had put it we're very fortunate to have all those people working together to support people in real need of when there was a really horrible time. So on behalf of the City of Rolling Hills and of all the residents, we really want to thank everyone for participated in helping in all the different ways that it happened. And we signed some, I signed some really exciting pieces of paper with a sticker on them. And so, yes, best we can do. So thank you again for everyone who was part of that. Really appreciate it.
No, okay. No, it's okay. So we want to thank you for coming to our meeting this evening. We do have a certificate. I don't know if the majority wanted to say a few words or not or anyone, but if you're willing to do so, if not, thank you very much for your involvement and support in our community. It's always good to be surrounded.
Group up at a time. How do you want to do it?
How do you want to do it?
So the Rotary, on behalf of all the Rotaries. And the Rolling Hills Community Association. They were gonna be here, they said they weren't coming. Okay. The Women's Community Club of Rolling Hills.
I've invited all the members that have been here tonight to join.
Can't believe I'm gonna be on everyone's Christmas cards.
The middle's way better.
She's trying to read your bandage.
Oh, shoot.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's the size of a house.
And Mayor Piper, I'm a member of the City Council. Staff also made certificates to all the restaurants that provided meals, such as the Original Red Onion, Lisa's Bon Appetit, et cetera. They'll be receiving these via mail.
All right, so then on, so then we need approval of the agenda.
I move the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the second blue folder?
Sorry. Sorry.
Oh, a different one, okay.
Make a motion to.
All right, I moved the items in the blue folder.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, so now we're gonna do public comment on things that are not on the agenda. Dustin.
Good evening. Dustin McNabb, 11 Quail Ridge Road South. I hope everybody on the council is doing well. I want to thank you for allowing me to spend a little bit of time tonight to talk about a very important issue that is about to affect each and every one of the members of the Courts Club in a very significant way. And I'm talking about the ADA project that is about to start on the 3rd of September. And before I get anywhere, the first thing I want to do is thank all of the council members for all their hard work to get the ADA project started. And that was, you know, that was four years of really hard work and I really appreciate it. And the Courts Club and all the members really appreciate that as well. But that said, last Thursday, we were notified not only of the beginning of the ADA project, but the closure of all three courts for a duration of about six months or more. The actual announcement said indefinite closure, but the plan is for the ADA project to go about six months. And this is gonna cause tremendous hardship to the Courts Club. While we appreciate all your hard work, we really want, we really need your help too to try and make sure that we can get construction done and access, maybe not to all the courts, but maybe to one court or two courts, so that we can have some or all of our members continue to enjoy the benefits that they've had over the last 50 years. We need, bottom line is, we need access to at least one court. And I, to put this in perspective, I went back and looked at our York Courts Reservation System. And we've got over 417 registered members of the tennis and pickleball club. And you might say, well, not all those guys are active, but let's divide the number in half. Let's say 200. I can count by name 100 pickleball players. So we've got a lot of people at stake here that are gonna be sidelined when this project starts. And these are people that come here not just for exercise on a regular basis. They come down here for social interaction as well. Last Sunday was a perfect example. We had 20 people down on the pickleball courts. By the way, the pickleball, there's only four pickleball courts, so there's four or five people waiting, obviously. But the point is, is there's, there's people that come down every, several times a week just to, just not only to play pickleball and get the exercise, but to enjoy the friendship of their friends and neighbors in the community. So that's an important part of being a member of the Courts Club and enjoying the facilities. And so to add a little bit further color and context to this, when you talk about even the 200, we're talking about over 10% of our community, which is a sizable number. And the bottom line is, if we continue current course and speed and we close all the courts, we're simply affecting too many people for too long a duration. Six months without using those facilities is just simply too, too long. And my hat's off to Jeff, who took the time with me yesterday to go crawling around the perimeters of all those courts to determine if there's any other solutions here. And we determined at least five different access points that could potentially be used to gain access to one or more of the tennis courts without affecting construction, without affecting any of the safety aspects that are involved in building what we need to build as part of the ADA project. Now, of those five, at least two require only minor grading of dirt, you know, to make a gradual ramp and/or removal of brush. So those are things that can be accomplished with a shovel and a chainsaw pretty easily. In fact, we're happy to volunteer our labor or our money, whatever it takes, to get that, to get that work done. But by using those, those, at least those two or any of the other access points that Jeff and I were able to determine, we can give access to the people to one or more courts and let, let construction continue. And so my final ask of you guys is, hey, right now, current course and speed, we're affecting too many people for too long a duration. I need your help to let both things coexist. And I would request, as I close my comments here, that we add this to the agenda for as long as it takes to resolve this issue. That's my request. If not, resolve the issue tonight or some other point in the near time. Thank you very much.
Anyone else would like my comment?
Good evening. I'm David Brown, a pickleball player. This is a big deal to a lot of people here. These are single-issue voters that are passionate about their racket sports and are extremely angry to have this surprise thrust upon them without any prior notice, without an opportunity to be heard, without an opportunity to talk to the council about alternatives. It's just bam. Your racket life is over at Rolling Hills. It's more infuriating because it's wholly unnecessary. Sometimes in construction, people have to live in the house. Maybe sleep in the rec room and cook on temporary stove in the garage. Things get worked out. That's what has to happen here. It's very easy to cut a path into the pickleball court, Court One, for example. Couple of our members could do it in an afternoon. It's really not a big deal. There's been no showing of any reason why that shouldn't be done. So it's just really exasperating to think that something like this could be announced without notice to anyone, not even the Courts Club that's supposed to get communications of this type. No hearing, no vote, just all of a sudden, boom, your courts are gone. And this is damage from closing the courts would take years to correct because the pickleball program, for example, took years to develop. A lot of hard work from many people to where it is now. And if people are just shut down for months, we're starting over. So this has to be avoided. The anguish, the anger of all these passionate residents has to be avoided. And there's no reason not to avoid it. It has to be worked out. And council should direct staff to not close this facility without a proper hearing, notice to the residents, an opportunity for the residents to be heard, and a vote by council to take away this valuable and important resource. So let's keep our courts open. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like my comment? Someone up?
Hi, I'm Kathleen Hughes at 13 Caballeros. I didn't really expect to become a pickleball player. My husband and I started recently. It's a, you know, a privilege to live here. It's a beautiful place. It can also be very isolating. And what we have enjoyed is the, the social nature of the club. Even though we're absolutely terrible players, everyone is very welcoming. So I hope that it doesn't close, and I just wanted to echo what Dustin and David said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Lola Fantapierre, 11 Flying Main Road. I just wanted to reiterate what Kathleen said and say that I think a lot of people might think, well, they can just go somewhere else. It's just temporary and there are plenty of other places to play pickleball, which there are. But are they like this? No. A lot of places are very competitive. People are not generous with their time, with their ability to play, with including people who are beginners. I only learned to play a couple of years ago. And I have heard stories from other people here who have ventured to other places and they came back because it was unpleasant. Because if you're in a different environment, sometimes, and this happens also with tennis, people can get very, very, very competitive in a way that is unpleasant and they make you feel bad when you are not playing to their level, right? So that's just part of sport, but here, we don't have that. We have somehow, the people who created this sport for us, and thank you to them, some of them have left, have managed somehow to create this environment where we're all at different levels. We all play at different levels. We play with someone better, with someone maybe not as good, someone new, someone who's really, really experienced, like maybe David. But we're, we all do it, we're all included, we're all having fun. We all want to win, which is natural, but we're all having fun. And it's an environment of friendship and community and encouraging people to stick their neck out and learn another sport, which they may never have considered, right? And, and, and when you're aging, sometimes this can be better than tennis sometimes. So I, I really love it and I just want to say, please don't underestimate the fact that we are specifically talking about this location for many reasons. There are other places to go, but they just will not be like this. So you just may lose people, you know? And as Kathleen said, they could just go back to prior pickleball and, you know, maybe not have that outlet for exercise and socialization. So I just want to say, it really is about doing it here because this is somehow very special. Thank you very much.
All right, anything else? And it can be on any, yep, Heather.
Hi, I'm Heather Ramsdale, 1 Caballeros Road. I'm not a good public speaker, so please excuse me. But I felt it was important for me to come up and tell you my point of view. I moved to this, I'm a South Bay resident for a long time, but I moved to Rolling Hills a few years ago. I'd never played pickleball before. I saw a sign-up and it said, summer barbecue, summer, I think it was a taco truck, a burger truck, come and play pickleball. And I'm like, you know what? I'm gonna try that. And I tried it and I'm addicted. And not only have I improved dramatically, but I have met so many friends, people that I never would have met if it wasn't for pickleball and it wasn't for the camaraderie of everybody who comes together to play, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday. I'm down there at least a couple days a week and probably half the people at least are too. And that's just such a small fraction. And we've, we've become friends outside of pickleball, but pickleball is what brought us together and helps us meet new residents and new people who just want to try pickleball for the first time. So if the courts are closed for such a long time, it's gonna really make an impact on people who don't have another social, another thing to do. It's really important, not just for people's physical health, but for their mental health. So just please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
And I'm not a good public speaker for sure. Everybody knows that. Benita Schwartz, I've lived at 76 Saddleback for over 50 years. I played competitive tennis for 25, 30 years. And I've played in all kinds of stuff like that. Pickleball is different. The pickleball we have here, I mean, I could go play a lot of different places. But people become so aggressive and so demeaning. I've played tennis where people would actually aim at my body parts. They don't do that in pickleball, not on purpose anyway. But they don't do that. But it was that way in tennis. And I'm to an age where I really like the practice of counting my score. And I like to be able to have something I can hit. But when we have new people who don't know how to play, this group is very welcoming, very warm. They take people under their wing and they tell them where to stand and where to hit it and what to do with it. And we put up a, I don't know what you call that, a thing where you're supposed to have, put your paddle up and say, oh, I'm next. We don't do that. We all know, okay, who wants to play next? That's it. That's how we play there. It's very welcoming, kind, and a lot of fun. And I could, I thought about it. I could go play up on that one up on the hill. I could go to PV. I could go, I can go almost any place and go play. But this is really a home to meet people, to get to know the community. This and COVID, walking up on Chris, I met more people than I've ever met before, ever living here. So, thank you.
Hi, Dan Bethencourt, I'm with Kathleen at 13 Caballeros. I just really want to emphasize, you know, we love Rolling Hills. We've been here 33 years. And it's not an easy place to know people. It's not an easy place to meet people. We have a few friends. We all have friends here, but it's not. And this is the single most important social activity that has happened, at least to us in Rolling Hills, even though we're part of the other organizations and the other events. And I think you just cannot de-emphasize that. And I think to take that away for a significant period of time, when maybe there's another alternative, is a big, big, important mistake for the community if it goes that route, purely on the social aspect, as you heard, but from a new player, whatever, but it's really not that. It's really the, the community aspect that I think is giving us something that we don't, didn't have before. Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, so you're done. We're gonna close the public comment. So just a couple of quick things. One, the reason we're doing this is because the state of California requires us to change the tennis courts and the pickleball court for ADA compliance. We've been out of compliance for a really long time. We've been kicking this ball down the road as far as we can as we are working our way through it between us and the HOA. And that's why we're doing this. Between that and our insurance company, who's concerned that we don't meet the requirements, putting us as a city at risk, which puts all of you at risk. That is the only reason, and it should be cleaned up. Let's go and think. It's not exactly the finest barbecue place in the world. But, so this is only happening because of these things are happening. We finally, took us a long time to get to signing up a contractor, which just happened. With that, they're trying to get this accelerated so we can get a lot of this done before theoretically the rainy seasons, et cetera. They have not even given us a full schedule on what is happening and we're working with them to try to mitigate this as best we can. And that's the best we're gonna be able to do. The statement right now that is, hey, it's gonna be until further notice because we don't know what further notice means. So we're gonna be working with them to see if we can make any path to what it is. We have been spending time and the city manager has been spending time talking to a variety of different people about the possibility of other options, which are, none of them are easy. The ADA compliance that comes into it, because we're the city, is, makes it very, very difficult. And we're already having communications. Karina's already talked to a whole bunch of people between Friday and now, looking at what those avenues are. So I 100% understand the frustration. I 100% understand why people are feeling this way. But this is not a decision that we made like, hey, we got an idea, let's close the pickleball courts. This is, we can no longer put this city at risk from a legal liability and from an expense standpoint, we have to do this and pull the trigger on it. So we finally did, and here we are. And some of the requirements are, from a safety reason, because safety is all that matters, right? We just had a traffic meeting before this and all we talk about is safety, safety, safety. So that's part of the reason this is happening. And I totally understand why you're frustrated. I would be frustrated too. We're gonna do our best to try to mitigate it as best we can, but we don't even know what that means yet because we haven't even had the contractors' conversations over, this is a big concern, how do we fix this? Okay? So again, thank you guys all for coming. We do take it seriously. We're not trying to make your lives miserable just for fun because we all live here too. So again, thank you very much.
Well, I gotta say, I just found out about this right now also. I mean, I found out about it when it was on, in my folder. And I think it's incredibly stupid also. So I, I don't see how we can't not do something, you know? So are you working on directing staff to make a way?
So staff is already working with, and here's more than, sorry.
Right.
Pop, John, here we go. Staff's already working with, on the north side is owned by Rolling Hills Estates. On this side, we have traffic engineers and all sorts of ADA compliance and what would happen if we went on this side. We have ADA compliant problems anywhere we do anything. So how could I get a wheelchair to the court? Is literally part of what we have to deal with on anything we're going to do. So we are talking to the right people. We're, we're talking to all the people that we can think of that are gonna try to do this, but we don't know what that answer is yet. And when we do, we're gonna tell you guys what the answer is at this moment and we'll go from there.
So will we be putting it on future agendas so that it can be noticed?
Who came up with the six-month number? We have no idea. Where did that come from?
The six-month number came from them saying, this is gonna take about six months.
I have a question.
No, we can't, we're not gonna, we can't. We, we can't, we're not supposed to. We're trying to make it so you can get, we have to put a ramp in down to the tennis courts. We have to, so that way you can get to any of the courts in a wheelchair. That's ADA compliant rules. All right? So the six-month is what they said, so we're gonna have to stop here because it's not agendaized. We'll put it on agenda when we can give you guys updates. And in between now and then, we'll do a better job of communicating to Dustin and the court leads on what's going on. And even when the answer is not what you want to hear, we're not saying that's the answer. We're trying our best to come up with solutions that are gonna work legally from an insurance standpoint, as well as from California law. Because California law is not friendly. Okay, all right, thank you very much. And if you guys, okay.
Mayor Piper, I'm starting to object. I believe the association just arrived. If we want to give them their certificate, I believe she's here.
Does she want, she doesn't want a picture with me.
No, but at least we can hand it to her.
Okay, we can. Hey, we said nice words about you. Thanks for coming. All right, we're gonna move on. Consent calendar?
I would move the consent calendar. There was a bill.
Skip that one.
You're talking about the one where they, 78,000 to the?
80,000, or is it a one question?
Number one, that I can't find right now. South Bay City Council of Government's membership, 83,58. When did it get up to 83,58? Because I would vote no on that.
The South Bay COGS rates change each year based on a formula which we brought to the council last year. the council last year.
To vote on our membership again, because this is a much bigger number than I've ever seen before. When do we get an option to vote on our membership?
We can bring that back in consideration for next year and bring back an updated report. We, we had a report last year that.
Right.
Bring that information back to the council.
Back up the rates, I'm done.
Okay.
So we have to approve it now, because it's done. And then we have to agendize whether we want to do this again. Can we request, can I request that?
Yeah, yeah.
And the question, the checking amount of seventy-eight thousand, one forty point six four, that was voided.
Right.
Are these other three checks that are listed there that are going to the South Bay Cities Council of Governments in lieu of that amount?
Correct. The, um, the South Bay COG issued an invoice that was a little bit difficult to read, and so we initially cut a check that was incorrect. The South Bay COG contacted us, and it's for the grants that they're running for us right now. And they asked, they said, are you intending to pay this, you know, grant payment all in one swoop? And we said no. So we had them send back the check. We voided it and we reissued the checks to the correct amounts.
And that's for services that they're giving us?
Correct. Two, two of the checks are specific to the grant, uh, and then the other check is the annual dues for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Then I would move the consent calendar.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we're going to go to commission items. Zoning case number, sorry about that, twenty-five zero-two-nine, site plan review of construction of a newly, of a new single-family residence with basement attached garage, five-foot height retaining walls, non-exempt grading and related improvements, conditional use permits to construct an accessory unit over two-hundred square feet, variance to exceed forty percent disturbance, and construction of a wall over three feet in the setbacks finding exempt from SEQA.
Is that one part?
Okay, so who cares about that part?
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. My name is Reyna Shatzel, and I'm a contract senior planner with Willdan. And I worked on the project you see before you tonight, One George F Road, for variances, conditional use permit, and site plan review. This went to the planning commission in July, so July twenty-fourth. The zoning is RES two, so it's a lot over two acres. And you see the property indicated right there on the zoning map. And this is an irregular-shaped lot with the front edge on George F, on the east side of George F, George F, north of Crest Road East. Um, for the background, RES two, net lot area of two thousand nine square feet, approximately four point eight two acres. The first building pad is approximately one point nine nine acres where the existing house is, the tennis court. And the second pad is below it, where the stable set aside, the stable set aside and corral will be. Um, there's an existing eighty-six hundred square foot home which will be demolished. The eight hundred thirty square foot house will be demolished. The sixty-eight sixty square foot tennis court will remain. And the seven hundred square foot swimming pool will be redesigned to about, about six-eighty-five. So it'll be redesigned, excuse me. As final background, the property went through a lot line adjustment in 2015 approved by the city, and it created four lots. One George F, one Buckboard, three, three George F, and eight Crest Road East. Hence, it's now a irregular-shaped lot. Um, the applications that the planning commission approved in July were to site plan review, as Mayor Piper said, for construction of a new home, twelve thousand square foot home going from eighty-six hundred to twelve thousand. Walls exceeding three feet, including, but no higher than five feet, and there will be some about five feet in the front yard area, which requires a variance. And so conditional use permit for the cabana, the, the planning commission approved a seven-hundred-and-ninety-two square foot cabana, which is over the two-hundred square foot allowance in the code. And finally, construction in the front yard, the variances, and site disturbance over forty percent, proposed is fifty-five. Again, planning commission approved this back in July twenty, back in July twenty-fourth. Here's the site, here's the site plan. It is in a regular lot. This is George F right here, entrance, you drive up the driveway. The existing footprint of the house is in green, you'll see. It's existing three-car garage. The house, eighty-six hundred square foot house, will be demolished. The existing pool is kidney shaped, kidney bean shaped. It'll be redesigned into a rectangular shape. Pad number two, as stated, is where the corral will be. The proposed new cabana is on pad one, and seven ninety-two tennis cabana. Existing tennis court to remain. Garage will be redesigned into a six-car tandem-style garage. And the existing house also does include a basement, eight hundred square foot, eight-twenty-two, which is exempt under the code, but just FYI, there will be a basement right under the garage. Here's the floor plan. I think I just went through this. Tandem-style garage, four bedrooms, two offices. There will be a sauna area for the master suite. And the basement is located right here, storage. Right here is the staircase down from the garage, floor plan. The applicant did provide renderings. This is the entry statement with a water feature lily pad. Oops, excuse me. This is looking out from, out of the entry, out of the front door to the lily pad. A new motor court, three-car garage. The new pool, and actually, the pool is in the backyard. This is the proposed seven ninety-two square foot tennis cabana. So gas hookups, water hookups for barbecue and, and, and water and refrigeration electricity. This is a water feature that is off the master suite where the sauna will be. And we did receive public comment back in July, and it was from six George F, basically a phone call asking about the plans. I explained the plans to him, and he didn't submit any comments in writing. And the RHCA also requests a redesign of the roof, which the applicant is aware of and will be working with the RHCA on. And the environmental review on this is exempt from SEQA pursuant to fifteen-three-oh-three new construction. And therefore, staff recommends that the city council receive and file. And if there are any questions, the applicant, as well as, I was told the property owner would be present as well, were here to answer questions.
Okay. Anybody have a question?
You said there were no comments from neighbors in writing. Were there oral comments from neighbors? Correct. And so what were the nature of the comments and were they addressed?
Yes, basically wanted to know the design of the home. I explained, you know, it's an eighty-six hundred square foot home being demolished to, to construct a new twelve thousand square foot home for the new resident. After I explained it, I offered to show them the plans if they wanted to come in or I could go out to six George F. He just was interested, and it was, um, the property owner, the namesake of the trail behind, escapes me. Foiled trail, yeah. So we had a nice little conversation, yeah. And he just, he was fine with that. He just wanted to know about the plans.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, thank you very much. Then we're going to open public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing there's no public comment.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Second?
I'll second.
Receiving file? Second?
I would just like to make a comment before we vote. I would like to disclose that I was, regardless of what it said in the report here, I was at both the staff, the site visit, and the planning commission meeting. And it said that, no matter, nobody from the public attended. I was attending as a member of the public, even though I didn't make a comment. I've, I've been there and I've, I've seen it.
That's good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, then we're moving on to the next one. A site plan, okay. Zoning case number twenty-four-one-two-one, site plan review, a residential addition with a new attached garage, non-exempt grading wall to exceed three foot maximum height, and other improvements, conditional use permits for detached structure greater than two-hundred square feet, and the findings is SEQA exempt.
Okay. Good evening, honorable council members. Hi. Hi, Dr. Black. I know. Okay, so the project before you is for six Quail Ridge Road North. There was, it's zoning case number twenty-four dash one-two, one-two-one, and it was for a site plan review and conditional use permit. And the property is zoned RES two, which is two acres or more. It's the little red star right here, as you can see. And the subject property is located on the Midwest part of the city. The project is located on Quail Ridge Road North, and it's the very end of the cul-de-sac. So right here is Quail Ridge Road North, and then it is located right here, in the, highlighted in yellow. Um, a little bit of background. The net lot area is one hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred, sixty-four square feet, which is four point five two acres, so it's large enough to support this project. It only has one building pad. The building pad area is a total of twenty-two thousand, nine, two hundred, nine hundred eighty-three square feet. So the building pad coverage does exceed the guidelines, but it's at fifty-two percent. It was previously for Quail Ridge Road North. It was been changed over to six Quail Ridge Road North in twenty-twenty-one. There is one existing, um, single-family residence that was built in nineteen fifty-six. It has an existing eight hundred and seventy-seven, um, attached garage, square foot, attached garage, a six hundred and fifty square foot swimming pool. There is two hundred and fifty-eight square foot attached covered porches, and there is an existing ninety-six square foot shed. Okay, also, as part of the application, there is a site plan review, which there's, there were some site plan reviews. The first site plan review is because it does, the, the site plan review is required for any additions that exceed nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet. For this project here, the existing eight hundred and seventy-seven, um, three-car garage will be converted into living space, which will become a new family room, a guest study, as long with a bathroom, laundry, and storage. Also, the southeast portion of the residence will also include a new attached five hundred and seventy square foot two-car garage. So there was an existing three-car garage. It's going to be converted into living space, and then the applicants are proposing to build a new two, um, attached, um, two-story garage, two, two-car garage. There's also an existing covered porch that will be demolished, and then they will, the entrance will be expanded. There'll be a new three hundred and eighty-three square foot entrance way. The total square footage of all of the additions, like I said, is going to be one thousand two hundred and sixty square feet, which exceeds the nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet, which requires a site plan review. Another part of the site plan review is there's grading. So the total proposed grading for this project is two hundred and seventy-two cubic yards of grading. It is, they are proposing a hundred and thirty-six cubic yards of cut for a total of five hundred, five thousand, two hundred and thirty-five square foot area that would be cut, and then a hundred and thirty-six cubic yards of fill, for a total of six thousand five hundred and thirty square feet. So all of the dirt will be balanced on site, and the, the, the project also involves a driveway expansion that includes six hundred square feet of disturbance. Also for the driveway, there are no changes to the driveway apron. The proposed changes for the driveway expansion is located at the southeast portion of the motor court, and I'll be able to show you pictures in the next slide. The motor court has to be expanded because the fire department requires widening of the existing motor court, so that way they can have fire access. So the location of the new garage, it will impede on the driveway, into the driveway, so that's why they have to expand the driveway, so that way they can have fire access. There is also a site plan review for the wall. There's a wall that's located where the driveway expansion is, but it will not exceed more than, it will not, it will not exceed five feet. There's also a conditional use permit part of this project, because the conditional use permit is, been requested for the cabana. The cabana exceeds two hundred square feet, so the applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for the five hundred square foot cabana. There were previous project approvals. So April sixteenth, this was approved by the planning commission, four to, four to zero. And then on May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, this was scheduled to come before you guys for receive and file. But there were some changes that were, um, there were some potential changes to the design, so, and the RHCA did not approve the garage. They were not hap, they didn't approve the garage design because they didn't like the connection of the garage, and then they also, the, the massing of the, of the proposed garage. So therefore, they were, um, the RHCA was suggesting that they might have to detach the garage. So in that case, if the, if the applicants had to detach the garage from the project, then it would require a conditional use permit. So they did come to a solution. Instead of detaching the garage, they actually enclosed the garage and redesigned it with the enclosed breezeway, so therefore, the, the garage is still attached to the, the main residence. On June seventeenth, the project was approved preliminary by the RHCA. And then we were going to bring it back to city council for, you know, consent, but that was in June. And then July came, and I think there was, there were some conflicts with schedules, so we didn't, we decided to bring it, staff decided to bring it to city council in, in August, because the applicants were able to present one George F, and then we would have also, also six Quail Ridge Road. We would just present them together, as, you know, to receive and file items. So that's why it's being presented before you guys tonight for receive and file. So this is the actual site plan here, grading. I don't know if it's hard for you guys to see, but this is the existing driveway. The, this is the outline of the existing driveway right here. This red area is where it's going to, where the grading is going to take place. So this portion here will be cut, and then this portion here will be filled. This is the location of the, of the garage. So this is the new garage that is going to be, that's part of this project. This driveway will be expanded, so that way then a fire truck can come down here, fully turn around, and have total access to the, to the home. And, um, the total grading is two hundred and seventy-two cubic yards of grading, and, which is a hundred and thirty-six cubic yards of cut, and then a hundred and thirty-six cubic yards of fill. Okay. Little bit more details about the driveway expansion here. This is the, the red square right here, this is the proposed driveway expansion. And this is the portion of the driveway that's going to be expanded, and this is the motor head, the motor court area that's going to be expanded here. This red outline right here is the additional disturbed area, and this is the footprint of the building pad, the red. Here, sorry that they're not as clear as I wanted them to be. This is the elevations, but the highest point for the project is fifteen feet and nine, nine and a half inches. And the architecture will ex, will match the existing, um, architecture of the main There was no changes to the cabana. The cabana, the highest, the height for the, maximum height for the cabana is ten feet, six inches, three, three-quarters inches. Here's the new proposed floor plan. So it's this half of the house here. This is where, right now, this is where the existing garage is. There's an existing three-car garage. This portion will be converted into livable space. So. So, here's, you know, the new family room, the study, new laundry room, and here's another study here. And then here is this new breezeway right here that connects to the, to the new garage. This is going to be a two-car garage. Kind of blew this up. This is a better picture. This was the design prior. This is without the breezeway. And then with the changes they made, there's no other changes with the, only the 82 square foot breezeway right here, which connects directly to the new garage. So, this was, this was the changes. They still kept the garage connected. And the project is determined categorically exempt from CQ. New construction, single-family residence, and accessory structures. Staff recommends that City Council receive and file. And I wanted to mention that to date, that staff did not receive any comments or concerns regarding this project.
Any questions?
And if you have any questions, the architects are here to answer any questions, and staff can answer questions as well.
All right, perfect. Thank you. No questions? We're going to open public comments. Is there any public comment? Seen no public comment. We're going to close the public comment.
Second.
Second? Aye. Thanks for coming.
I know you're not going to like this, but I have a question of staff.
Oh.
Me too.
In general. This is a lot of paperwork. There's a huge expense, I think, to the applicants for these. Most of what we need is usually, we request it to be in our binder. Is there something that we could do to make this not so bad for the applicants?
We can take that into consideration and come up with an alternative option. Mayor may not include something electronic.
You're killing me.
And we'll bring something back before City Council, that's fine.
Okay, so can we do this? Is, always my concern with this is, it's super easy to say, okay, we want none of this. But if we get to this meeting and have a question that's not in what we can see, and we drag this out for another meeting, you are killing the applicant. Because the carrying cost between this meeting and the next meeting could be 10 grand, could be 50 grand, could be hundreds, thousands of dollars worth of whatever. The fact that we didn't need this for some of these is concerned. Now, could it be half of that? Maybe. But I'm just saying is, we need to be very careful that we don't get through here, and then Jim says, where's the proximity map to the next-door neighbor? Why isn't that in here? Oh, we can't approve this today. We're going to kick it over to the next meeting. We just be super careful, because having built a house, I would rather throw away the $1,000 that cost me to get all this paperwork sent to us than to delay it one more meeting. Just want to say that out loud, but if it's less, I'm totally good.
And that's a great perspective, and I appreciate hearing that. It makes, it makes more sense, so do something.
Well, what about making the plant size smaller, half that size? I mean, the amount of detail is incredible. I don't have a table big enough in my house to open it up on and.
So, just.
We'll come, we'll come up with a creative solution.
F has heard us, and she'll figure out some sort of happy medium that we can try to get to. Because we don't need all the, there's a lot of this stuff we don't need, because we don't approve that part. Okay, moving on. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign a joint Palos Verdes city letter to Governor Gavin Newsom regarding the expansion of Executive Order N 3225 and suspension of SB 9 applications within a very high fire hazard severity zone.
Mayor Piper and member City Council. Rancho Palos Verdes has been spearheading this effort in regards to both Senate Bill 9, but also the Executive Order Number 32-25 specifically, specifically as it relates to very high fire hazard severity zones in our region and the state of California in general. The item before you was presented before the City Council at the City of Rancho Palos Verdes. Initially, it was intended that staff sign, and, sorry, mayor signed, but their own individual letters. However, they felt that by having the four city mayors from the four peninsula agencies to sign a letter would be a lot more impactful when it is delivered and sent to Senator Ben Allen's office, State Assembly Member Almer Suji, and inclusive of Jeff Kiranen, who is our representative for the League of California Cities, who, as you know, the league provides advocacy and represents agencies when items come before the legislation that can impact our communities. The letter is before you. It is a final letter, and I believe, Mayor Piper, you were aware of this. This may have come around at your amazing mayor lunches with the other three agencies. I will add that the City of Palos Verdes Estates will be signing this item at their next council meeting. Rolling Hills Estates is signing it tomorrow, and it is before you this evening. And as I mentioned, the City of Rancho Palos Verdes has already signed the attached letter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and member City Council. That concludes my presentation.
Any comments?
I do. I just wanted to know, obviously, anything in here is, is true, and it's concerned. But I'm wondering why they did not also specifically reference, besides PB Drive, I guess they're saying P, Palos Verdes Drive. It's not saying Palos Verdes Drive North, and they say Palos Verdes Drive South. But we also have PB Drive East, which is a very congested two-lane road, as well as Palos Verdes Drive North. And then there's a little small area of Crest Road before residents can exit out of our city to get to Crenshaw. So, it seems that they missed a few things to kind of underscore how limited it is. But to the extent that time is of the essence, it would have been nice to have a little draft to be able to add some material in the future. Maybe we could do that.
The draft came signed.
Oh.
They said, we're sending this. Do you guys want to sign it too? So.
Right, because there's no way to get rid of the third paragraph?
No. Nope. So, we either sign, we either, we either are the fourth signature, and we send it, or we don't sign it at all.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. Anyways. Hey, we're going to open public comments. Is there any public comment? Seen no public comment. We're going to close the public comment.
I'd make most of the mayor sign it and cross out the third paragraph. No, can't cross out the third paragraph. Okay. Sign it.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Of creating a limited ad hoc committee to discuss potential red flag warning municipal code changes related to parking and potential prohibition, high-risk outdoor activities.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the last meeting, we had a very broad discussion related to red flag warning days as it related to parking, as it related to doing special type of activities or work in the city. During that meeting, the council decided one of the motions was to create an ad hoc committee to discuss this further, as well as apportion some of the discussion related to traffic and parking over to the Traffic Commission. With that said, this item is before you tonight to actually decide who may serve on that committee, and then make a motion to appoint them. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, any questions? Seen none. We're going to open public comment. Is there any public comment? Seen no public comment. We're going to close the public comment. What do you guys want to do?
I volunteer to be on the committee.
Well done.
Yes, and I volunteer also, knowing that there is really probably very few people.
Well, no, actually, I was going to do this, because I feel like, as crazy this might be, there might need to be another side in this one. So, that's what I was thinking, that I would do it.
Annonymate the mayor and Leah for the committee.
All right, is there a second?
I want to know who's going to not want to do the red flag recommendations. That's what I want to know.
Okay, so it's like if you're interviewing us. I mean, I, I know that you guys had some discussions at the last meeting about what we could do, and I made a statement that you have to have some trade-off, that safety versus your, you know, if you've got a wedding planned or something like that, I think that's going to be the task before us to be able to work it out.
And the reason I want to do this, and believe me, I don't ever want to do this.
Right.
Is, the reason I want to do this is, because I think that's part of this conversation needs to happen. That it doesn't become super absolute and untenable.
Right. So, you're the pro-wedding person?
I would be the pro-wedding person.
I'm not pro or anti-wedding.
Yeah. Ish, ish. All right.
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
You've worked with me, Jim.
Okay. All right. Now, we're moving on to matters from staff. Receive and file the Public Safety Emergency Prepartness Update.
Good evening, Mayor Piper and City Council. I'm going to give a quick update regarding the siren system, the emergency siren system. HQE engineers are looking at the feasibility of installing one siren system, or one pole in the Flying Triangle. In early discussions, they have determined that potentially, a potential location would be on Portuguese Bend Road at the turnabout, kind of near Ranchero Road, above Ranchero Road, if that makes sense. And the fourth siren pole, potentially on Southfield, they've indicated that they have exhausted most of the viable locations on Southfield. They would like the city to consider maybe exploring previously identified sites there. So, still, still working with them and their sound engineers to do the sound propagation studies. HQE currently is installing the SAFE Network in Paradise, California. They anticipate finishing that project in the fall, at which time they would come to Rolling Hills to install the, the grant project, the SAFE Network. They would install three gateways on the poles that we currently have, and, and they are confident that, that SAFE Network would, oh, sorry, that those three gateways would cover the entire city, given the terrain and everything. So, they, with the SAFE Network, with the units that are for indoors, they are specifically for indoors. They do not work outside. So, it would, in fact, cover indoor coverage, but if somebody were to be outside, they would not be able to hear the sirens if they were in an area that the sirens were not heard. So, just as a reminder. Once the system is active, residents will have the opportunity to purchase individual SAFE units for their homes at an estimated cost of $100 per unit. And they would have a dedicated website where residents could order those. I would like to note that our project manager, Charles West, is leaving the company. So, unfortunately, we will be working with a new project manager beginning in the next week or two. Regarding the hazard mitigation, the joint, or sorry, multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, staff with particular assistance from the Planning Department worked together to complete a draft of the Rolling Hills Annex for the plan. This was submitted to Blackham Beach, our consultants, early last week. Staff continue to participate in bi-weekly coordination meetings with the consultant and the other peninsula cities. The city's backup power project continues to move forward with steady progress. The plan check was completed August 15th, and stamped designs were received August 20th. Bid preparation is now underway, and bids are expected early October. The project will provide reliable backup power to the city to ensure continuity of operations during outages and emergencies.
Excuse me, Sam. I'm sorry to interrupt, but do you think there's, there's so many things in, in this project? Would it be, or in this report, would it be possible to, like, talk about the sirens? I know we have a lot of people here for the siren issue, and that, that way we can ask questions regarding that. And, you know, and so stop here before we go on to the metropolitan water, and then cover just these three items at a time? Would that be?
Sure. Sounds great. Okay. Does anyone have questions about the siren?
Just specific. When are the mock-up poles going up at the previously approved two sites?
Staff have reached out for pricing options with that, so I, I don't have an exact timeline, but.
When are we going to map with these new sites so that we can vote on those? One that you've now identified, they've identified in the Flying Triangle, and another one so we can look and have a look and vote on approving those.
So, so far, at the last City Council meeting, we discussed the two sites at Upper Blackwater and Chesterfield. So, those were mapped out. Flying Triangle, that proposed site, and any potential viable sites on Southfield, we could probably bring those back to the council at the next council meeting, is my hope.
Good. Thank you.
I have a question. You mentioned something very briefly about the fourth pole, potentially on Southfield, but they want the City Council to explore previously accepted sites, but I don't know what that means.
Not, no. So, they had explored some previous sites on Southfield, I believe, and I'd have to go back historically. But I believe one of them was around Flying Main. And, and so that site was explored. There was also a location near the mailboxes on Southfield. Those are the two that I'm aware of. There was also one on Pac Saddle. So, it may require just revisiting those. So, staff will have a conversation with HQE this week to see what options are viable.
And when you say revisit, were they ruled out for some reason?
Yes, correct.
And why, why were they ruled out previously?
I believe it was due to site, uh, view concerns.
From residents, meaning?
Correct.
Okay. So, HQE approved them, but then there were.
Correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand what the basis was.
So, with regard to the pole, proposed pole in Flying Triangle, there was an issue the last meeting about truck traffic? Has that been resolved? Truck access?
I don't know that that has been resolved yet. It, I do know that that particular location is above the main area of concern, the sort of the dip in the road.
It's below the sly, but not necessarily outside of Flying Triangle. I don't know what the association for the.
Right. I don't know either, yeah.
So, I'm just curious if that's been addressed. And then if there wa, if for some reason, a pole at that location was approved, would that eliminate the need for any type of pole farther up the hill on the Southfield access area?
No, it would, it would require another pole. It would really just be covering the Flying Triangle area.
Well, I thought that the reason for putting a pole up the Southfield general area, Flying Main, you know, the different streets up there, was to give coverage to the Flying Triangle.
The ideal location that the vendor had proposed was on Ringbit. They felt that that location would cover both areas. They have indicated that, I, I believe that the mailbox location on Southfield would still cover both areas. But if you were to move the pole up near Flying Main, it would not cover the Flying Triangle, is my understanding.
Okay, so we still don't have a location for the, I like to call it the Southfield access area.
Yeah.
And the location for the Flying Triangle is, where did that come from?
I, it was my understanding that that site was discussed some time ago. And so, unfortunately, with, with.
Somebody ruled it out, a resident or other?
I, I honestly don't know the, the history behind that particular site, but according to HQ, it was, it was a site that was being revisited. They, with the staffing change, it's been challenging to move forward with.
I understand all the part of it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just trying to, this is a new development. I'm just trying to understand the context and the history of.
So, if we're talking about the location just above Ranchero Road, it was because a resident did not want it there.
So, it's already been.
They came down there, and when they were starting to assess that location, and they were pulling out their equipment, a resident stopped them. And it was.
Any natural terrain or trees?
No. It was an ideal location based on the turnaround, and it was a viable location through the association because of the easements. But most of these locations have been recommended and approved by HQE, and staff worked with them and the association to find these locations. It's been resident pushback on views, proximity to their home, that has been difficult for us to proceed.
Okay. I, I understand that, but what is expected to be. Okay, I, I understand that, but what is expected to be accomplished by revisiting the site that has already been, you know, not exactly embraced by residents?
Sure, that one component is we'd have to stake that location to ensure that when DICK Alert comes out and pays that area visit, it is clear of any utility lines that could be potentially impacted from the placement of the pole, because it has to go underground. So, that was, that has not been accomplished. They had to come out, do one final sound propagation, and then, and stake the location.
Yanni?
Do we expect, I mean, this is unfortunate to hear that Charles is leaving. Did you get any sense at all in the conversations that you've had, that whoever this new person is is going to be able, like, hit the ground running and get us, get us going?
I did reach out to both of them today, this new project manager, to set up a, a meeting to touch base. That's my understanding, that they will be accessible to us. However, in regards to available sites, it's limited, right? And we're, we're kind of reaching that capacity, it seems.
Well, and I, I think, if my understanding is correct, part of this push and take that's come along is to try and have as few poles as possible, you know, cost-wise, each, each pole costs a lot of money, and we had had some discussions trying to get them to have as, you know, try and give us the most coverage that you can get with the fewest amount of poles. And then, when the issue up on Ringbit, that was going to cover the Southfield area as well as down below, they were thinking, I think the question was raised, if it doesn't have to go down to Flying Triangle, could this pole then be smaller, the one that, lower, right, is, isn't this a discussion that...
Yep.
Thank you, that, that we'd had. So, I think that's where that thing of revisiting down in the Flying Triangle came up again, and because that pole, anything, any siren there, isn't going to go anywhere but the Flying Triangle. So, that's my recollection of the discussions.
Yeah, so the goal would be is, now that we're doing two instead of one, if that's where we end up, then how much smaller can the pole be, and can we push it further out of the way, whatever the heck that means, than where they're talking about putting it? Because before, they were trying to solve it all with one pole. And, and honestly, it, this is the question really for them, you don't really need to, because then, on Southfield, the part is, can you, if it can get smaller, because now it's doing this smaller of an area, it doesn't have to go up and over the hill, can that get shorter? Because I think there's two problems here, because the poles themselves aren't too crazy. I mean, when I look at it there, they're way better than I thought they were going to be, and believe me, I thought they were going to be horrific. So, they're way better than I thought they were going to be, but if we can get them shorter, it really starts to mitigate some of these problems, just so that they look at that, and, and the advantage of the new person is, he doesn't have any of his baggage, and they can start over with, where can this go, and how do we solve this for basically two unique spots, instead of one thing that's out on the end, because it's going to now solve both of them. Good luck. Okay.
They, they have to be as anxious to complete this project as, as we are.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a loser for them.
I, yeah, and I, I feel a sense of urgency, as I'm sure everyone here does, to get, to get this done. I'm hoping that in your communications with them, you're getting that same sense of feeling that they want to get this done.
They want us to go away.
100%. Yeah, and I will say, since I've been here, this is our third project manager. I got here, I met one for about a couple of weeks, and he was gone. We got Charles, Charles is now leaving, so we just found this out today, in fact, so this is new information.
We just have to make sure this doesn't slow us, slow us down.
No, they're definitely ready to move forward, as long as we're able to give them locations to put those poles, they're ready to put them up, once we get the final okay through DICK Alert.
And then, my last question would be on the deployment of the SAFE network and, and boxes. So, if they, did they give you any idea how long that might take to implement, once they're through in Paradise and can come here and work on that? I mean, it sounds like it's taking months to do it in Paradise, I realize they've got a lot more, a lot bigger area.
That's correct. Yeah, and they did say that they could come in the fall, and then staff inquired if they thought that the project would be up and running by the end of the year, and they assured us that that would be the case.
The project, meaning the SAFE network?
This is, sorry, yes, just the SAFE unit, SAFE network part.
Do you have a commit, not a commitment, but have they said the same thing? If we were able to get off our, our butts here and get this going, that they, do we have any type of a timeframe of how long it would take to actually put the poles in?
We do not. I would, you know, refer to the previous experience of get, installing the three poles, and how long it took for plan checks, and, which is a lengthy process, so, once they're approved, and we still have to go to the RHA Board of Directors to get licensing for the easements, so it's a, as you know, it's a lengthy process.
Thank you.
Okay, so, HQE committed to covering all of Rolling Hills at 70 dBs with three poles, that was our agreement with them, they didn't meet that. Now, they're saying with those same three poles, they can cover the entire city with the SAFE network? What do we have that, and what do we have that backs that up, and particularly, coming back and asking for more money if it doesn't work?
We don't have anything contractually to, beyond the three poles, and the promise that 70 dBs would be the coverage area for Rolling Hills, but, I mean, they covered the sound propagation for Rolling Hills. But, moving forward, they have made no official guarantees with those poles, they, I mean, they've expressed confidence, but we don't have anything.
The SAFE network?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, they, so, in that conversation...
Not meant that other one, so I was asking, now they made another commitment.
Yeah, so, it, it is...
Get another, oh, sorry, it's going to cost you more money?
Right, so the SAFE network, they have offered it as a grant, so it's no cost to the city. They've ensured that, they feel confident that installing three gateways on the existing poles should cover the entire city. However...
Listen to you, but go ahead.
Yeah, however, I, I did say, what if it doesn't? So, they, they said, well, we can co-locate additional gateways onto utility poles. I, I would like to inquire further about that, because they've said that they have had experience doing that in the past. I, I did not ask at the time if there would be additional cost for those additional gateways. I don't know how much those are per unit, but that would be something that we'd like to inquire further on.
Yeah, and you don't just get to put something on a utility pole.
Right.
You know, they're, they have leased access on utility poles, so there's costs for that.
And permission necessary.
Right, right.
For it.
Okay, so...
The joint, yeah, the joint utility, yeah.
All this stuff. All right, we're good. So, we're going to open up public comment, public comment, come on up, name, name and address.
Good evening, my name is Mark Ellers, I'm here on behalf of Cheryl Marks, who lives at 8 Chesterfield Road. We're here to oppose the installation of a siren location on Chesterfield cul-de-sac. She's prepared a written opposition, copies are out there, if anybody'd like to take a read. I'm not going to wear you guys out in chief, the opposition is twofold. One of them is, the city sought neighborhood feedback from the neighbors on Chesterfield Road. Most of the neighbors weren't around for that, about half of them were on vacation when that was sought. The report from the city staff states that. Moreover, Ms. Marks, who attended the meeting, was provided about 12 hours' advance notice of the meeting, which was held at 7:00 AM the next day. The people who were at the meeting didn't really know anything about it, or have any information or documentation to understand what it all meant. The people that we've talked to since have all been opposed to it, as, as particular to the Chesterfield location, not just because of the impact on the character of the community, the preservation of views and preservation of beauty, but also because we feel like they're putting the cart before the horse. What we think is the missing emergency communication is the SAFE network. If they're saying that they can install that and get coverage over the existing three poles, we think we ought to get that done first, and then see, you know, do we need this additional sound coverage? Now, what I mean by that is, in the event of, God forbid, we have catastrophe, the most direct way of communicating with citizens is going to be the alert South Bay. Now, obviously, that doesn't work if cell coverage goes down, and we have to rely on outside communications, which we have a couple ways to do that. One of them is the existing three sirens, but we also have emergency personnel, presumably LASD will be in a helicopter with loudspeakers, we'll have other first responders out there with loudspeakers, but what's missing is the indoor component that's going to be filled with the SAFE system. We believe that we've got to prioritize having the SAFE system installed with the infrastructure that we already have, to see if it will even work. We've already seen that this company hasn't been able to deliver on their promises with the original three sirens, let's see what they can do with the SAFE system, because otherwise, where does it stop? How many more poles are we going to need? How much more is it going to cost? But at this point, we just kind of want to put a pause on additional poles until we get the SAFE system installed, we think that should be a priority. Again, we have written opposition outside, if you want to take a copy, and that is what I have to say today.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Arlene Hondo, 33, Portuguese Ben Road. In your blue folder item, we, on behalf of the block captains, we had our meeting on Thursday, and we authored a letter and solicited residents and block captains and support team to sign in favor of it. So, I'm, I'm assuming you've all read it, so I don't need to read that letter to you, do I? Okay. So, a couple of, of points that I just wanted to highlight, that the block captains and support team and residents who signed this particular letter are really saying a few things. One is, we would like a commitment to get this project completed by the end of the year, notwithstanding it has to go through plan check. The idea here is that this project of three, of, of trying to evaluate the sound discrepancy has, was talked about at your city council meeting in January. So, it's already been eight months, or it's approaching eight months, and we think that you need to direct staff and HQE to make this a priority. That's number one. The, the people who signed this letter feel that it's, there's no sense of urgency about this project, and we would like to see some demonstration that there's a sense of urgency on that. So, that's one. Two, there was some question at the last city council meeting about how many homes are affected? Didn't seem like you had the right, you know, information. We know that HQE has done a sound propagation analysis on this, and they are proposing three poles, which we know probably cover substantially a good part of the city. So, on, on our, you know, informal, non-technical analysis, we put together the, the list of homes on each street that is, is affected by the three locations, such as the Flying Triangle, Southfield, Chesterfield, Chuck Wagon, Upper Blackwater, Poppy Trail, et cetera, and we came up with 212 homes, which represent 30, it represents 30% of the city. So, to your point, Pat, in terms of, we had a commitment from HQE that they were going to cover the city with three poles, and they, they fell 20%, excuse me, 30% short. So, 30% of the homes in Rolling Hills are saying that they can't hear the sirens. So, in, so, in addition to that, the other item is, you know, as block captains and residents, you know, we don't feel it's necessary for us to come to a public hearing and debate with our neighbors where a location of a pole should be, you know? That's not our role, we don't want to get in, in arguments with our neighbors in terms of where these poles should be. But, we have heard a lot about views. Karina just said it. I don't, I don't understand the priority that city staff makes that, you know, they're going to eliminate a location because of a view. I, I get it if, if residents are opposed to a particular location, everybody has a right to say, you know, what they want, if they want it near, near their home or on an easement, that's their prerogative. But, this project is about public safety. This project has been on the block captains' priority lists since it, since 2019, when the block captain program was, was reinstated. It has always been around what happens when communications fail. So, we already know what happened to Eaton, people's lives, people died in that fire because of the lack of communication. So, we're just saying, we know that tough decisions are going to have to be made, hopefully at this level, at the city council level. So, we want the priority to be public safety. We know it's a balancing act, that's why we live here. Everybody wants their views, everybody thinks this is a pristine community, but when push comes to shove, public safety has to trump the, you know, the decision point here, and, that's your responsibility. Lastly, the, last thing that I just want to point out is that, I have to look at my But the last item that I wanted to mention was that, if you look at the list of residents who have signed this, this petition or letter that we're sending on, to you, it represents young and old, age-wise, all the way from young families to people who are in their 90s. It also represents new and old residents. It also represents, it also represents people, bless you, people in, who have, who have had longstanding influence in our community, from caballeros, the courts club, the women's club, block captains, support, and, you know, people who don't even get involved. But, look at that list. We're not, we're not, we're not asking, you know, to be the arbitrators in terms of where these, these poles should be located. We're just asking you to hold HQE responsible for their original commitment that they made to you a year and a half ago. A year and a half ago, this project was, was approved, in June, I think, of 2001, whenever. So, they made a commitment, they haven't been, been able to deliver. If, if you're not going to hold them accountable for the money, if they're going to ask for more money, then we believe that you should be, you should be expected to pay the additional money. We feel that you should go back to HQE. But, if you don't want to go back to HQE and ask them to make good on their commitment to this city, then I think you have, the city has to be responsible for, for ponying up the additional money. And we know additional money is not easy to come by. You know, we heard the discussion on the, you know, utility poles, you know, the undergrounding. So, we know it's an issue, but we think that with some effort and, and push from you, hopefully, we can get this project completed with, this year.
Thank you very much.
That's what we'd like.
Any other comments?
Here. Hi, I'm Tom Brody, I live on 1 Hummingberg Lane. You've never seen me before. I hope. So, no, I, I'm always working in a hospital. So, basically, I live in a silent area. Every time you have sent out a notice that you're going to have a siren test, I have taken the day off, I've sat outside in my backyard, and I have communicated back to the city that it was perfectly silent. You know, we live here for silence, I think, in many ways. It's not noise like the hospital, Dr. Brody answered this. Dr. Brody answered this. But this company has contracted with you folks to supply 70 decibel siren for every resident in the city. Now, it seemed to me that a year and a half, I would contact my attorney, and I would say, send them a performance letter, or we're going to take you to court. In addition, I don't think most people understand what 70 decibels is. That is your washing machine. So don't expect to hear this inside your home. Over the past five days, how many people here had their windows closed? We did. I'm sure most of you did too. You would hear nothing unless you're pretty close to this thing. On March 4th, someone in the city, I will not mention name, communicated with me, the quote is, "The vendor has committed to adding additional poles if needed to guarantee their promise of 70 decibels at each property in Rolling Hills." Someone needs to hold these people accountable. This is a ridiculous thing. People die from fires, and even worse than that, worse than that, the congestion that it can cause if people don't know something is not to go that way. Redondo and Torrent Beach has a siren system there. It produces 110 decibels at a mile. I don't expect these people to have taken the time to understand a couple of things. Our topography is terrible for sirens. But worse than that, our seasonal variation in vegetation has a significant effect on baffling buff, is that the word baffling? What is the word?
Baffling.
One of the words, such would be, of the sirens. They didn't take this into account. And I have to ask you one other question. Why wasn't Eastfield Gate considered as a site? You can put it on my property. I'm just up from Eastfield Gate. We'd love to have it. But this is a ridiculous thing, because tragedies happen unexpectedly, and we live in a very high-fire zone, and we have a lot of people here who are not as ambulatory maybe as they should be and need every minute of warning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comment?
I have one other question. I'm sorry. What does each pole cost?
They're not doing it by that, but I do.
If I raise money for it?
We'll find out.
Okay. Please get back there.
I'm Martha Bernadette, 10 Chesterfield. I want to first thank the staff for meeting with me, not once, but twice. Once on the street at that early morning meeting, and then after the last city council meeting where I learned a lot more about the system. Again, I have to say, I believe in public safety, and I am one of the people with the pole right in front of my dining room on Chesterfield. So I would prefer to not have it there. There's an alternate location that was staked up on Chuck Wagon and Bowie, and I don't know, you know, at some point, that dropped off the list. It's just on the other side of a three-rail fence from the easement, so it doesn't impact parking. And so I would like that to be reconsidered. And after hearing the gentleman who spoke for Mrs. Marks earlier, I would say, I think from a common sense standpoint, it makes a lot of sense to test those safe boxes, because most of us will rely on those inside of our house. I have been here for two fires, and during those two fires, I was alerted, the first one by hearing a helicopter, and went outdoors and saw the smoke, and prepared my go-bag that, or grabbed my go-bag, which we had prepared after block captain meetings a number of years before. And then the other one, I smelled smoke and called my neighbor on the other side of the hill, and then went over and evacuated their family to our side of the hill. I think one of the things that I'd like to mention from a block captain's standpoint, I'm not a block captain, but I'm happy to work with ours, is that a number of years ago, we spent a fair amount of time, and there was a lot of energy around action plans. And even today, if our side of the hill of Chesterfield couldn't hear a siren, I would hope that we would have some plan such that those who can hear the siren are responsible for notifying those who can't in some way, in an organized plan, say the old-fashioned telephone tree. But to me, that's one of the pieces that's missing that we should be working on right now, just locally with our block captains. I'll have to say, thanks.
Thank you very much. Come on up. Got to give your name and your address. Sorry.
Hi. Michelle Del Conny, 30, Chuck Wagon. My question is, I live at the very top of Chesterfield, so I look down Chesterfield, and I definitely want safety, but I also can, we all pay our taxes to have our beautiful home, our beautiful view. If it came to something where you guys are pushing it, and it's, you know, you're looking at Chesterfield, will there be some sort of stake where we can see it before it goes up to see how ridiculously high this thing's going to be? I haven't really paid attention, but today I went by the fire station. It's a pretty tall pole, and I'm like trying to envision that down our street in our view. And I know it seems like Bowie and Chuck Wagon would be less intrusive to more people. I could be wrong. Ask people. But I would hope you guys would consider that. But either way, I think, I don't know. Do you put up something so everybody can see what it looks like ahead of time?
Yep.
You do? Okay. That would be helpful. And I just want to, the gentleman that spoke earlier for Mrs. Marks, I agree with that. I think that, you know, we need to pay attention to how we can get the alerts in our home. If you're inside, the doors are closed, you're not hearing it. I just, you know, hopefully your neighbor's texting you or something, but hopefully we can prioritize that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
No.
I'm going to leave at 9:30. I have a surgeon.
Hi, Judith Hanell, 31 Eastfield. So I know you've heard from a lot of other people. I was kind of sitting here patiently to see what people were going to address. One of the questions was, I think, what Leah brought up about, or Patrick, how much of a setback it is that there's a new person coming on board, and I think you, it's a little bit hard sometimes to hear in the back. You said that you feel like he's going to be able to hit the road running with us? You do? I mean, that's the hope. Okay? And as far as the Chesterfield area and stuff, I mean, I've mentioned in a couple of meetings that I don't know how they're evaluating their positions of where they want to put poles, but I've offered my property, and I don't know if they have to be able to get trucks to a pole to do maintenance on them and stuff. But I have an empty hillside that faces towards Chesterfield and Chuck Wagon. Some of you know I'm kind of, that's the direction I face, but if it's in the right spot or on the upper part of my property, it could be aimed maybe both ways, and maybe it would hit towards the Eastfield Gate if they can't put something at the Eastfield Gate. Because if something does go to the Eastfield Gate, they've just got to put it in the right position, because otherwise, the people down outside the gates are going to hear it more than the people in the gates. And I know that there's been talk about putting things in people's houses, but you brought up a good point, that when you've got air conditioning going and stuff like that, you don't necessarily hear things. When the Woolsey fire happened, I didn't hear anything until somebody texted me that something was going on. With that being said, in our block captain meetings, we talk about how, and when we're trying to bring on more block captains, we try to make a point of saying, you're not responsible for saving people's lives and staying behind. I mean, I'm kind of a person that probably would and make sure all my neighbors are out and okay, but that's not our responsibility. And that being said, when Woolsey happened, I went to the city hall there, and I asked them, what do you recommend until you get sirens? And the city manager, or the person that was in charge, like Samantha's, said, just get on your horn in your car and just lay on it. Don't go beep beep. Lay on it, and people are going to eventually come outside and wonder what's going on. That also being said, every time I get a coupon from Big Five, I go and I buy megaphones. It's not for the megaphone, it's for the siren that's on the megaphone. It's really loud. So if people take responsibility for that, like as I said, we're not responsible to be here to save lives, but if we each, we're worried about whether we could hear something inside our house, but if we get something like that that's outside the house, and we do make block captains at least a little bit more responsible, or some people will step up to say that they would be willing to do that, and they use those sirens, they're pretty darn loud. So maybe we could try them at least, because one of my other questions is, if, right now, we're waiting on these other poles, are the poles that we have right now workable? If there's an emergency tomorrow, we're going to hear them, right? They're going to set them off?
They're going to set them off.
Okay.
Do you hear them?
Okay.
Different problem.
Right. So that's why I'm saying, maybe there's other supplemental things. You know, when I went and got a new phone, I bought a satellite phone number, so hopefully that would work if stuff goes down and we can't get other alerts by phone. So, and I think technology is eventually going to catch up. I know we've talked about it in other meetings, that by the time this gets figured out, there will maybe be other technology that can be used, but, so I don't know if we're putting all our eggs into like, oh, these sirens are what's going to save us, but, but again, with our, you know, our, the way our hills and valleys and dales are and stuff, it's different than being down at the Redondo Beach where they have tsunami warnings or whatever, because it's not just about fire, it's about other stuff too. I mean, we did just recently have tsunami warnings, and it came on our phones, but if there really was a tsunami, would we set off our sirens here for that? Luckily, we're up high, so we didn't have to worry about it maybe as much as other people. But it's not just about, you know, whether a fire happens, you know, there may be other catastrophes to consider, because even with fires, a lot of the issue is smoke. It's not just getting out of the way of a fire, it's getting out of the way of direction of smoke, because that can be pretty, pretty bad. So, anyway.
Thank you very much.
Marian Visco, Cinching Road. I'll be very, very brief. First of all, safety is the most important thing in our city, and I think everybody can agree with that. I mean, yeah, we don't like to have stuff right in front of us and mess up our view, but still, safety still remains the most important thing. And the second thing is, as I remember still talking about when the company came, they promised that everybody would be able to hear, when they put the poles, they promised that everybody would be able to hear them. There would be some that might need the safe boxes, but anyway, what I want to do is just that we don't want to drag this on any longer than we have to, and let's just get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we're going to close the public comm. Okay, we're going to close the public comment for this chunk, and then we're going to go on to the rest of Sam's part of the update.
Should I continue where I left off?
Yep.
Yep. The Metropolitan Water District has approved the reservoir for the installation of a helipad dip tank, which will provide an important water source for firefighting helicopters. According to Chief Keen, site prep is underway, installation and testing with the LA County fires expecting it in the coming weeks. This installation will strengthen regional firefighting capacities and enhance wildfire response efforts for Rolling Hills and the surrounding communities. Staff participated in a debrief with the Area G Public Safety Partners following the recent tsunami event. Staff were...
I ask you before you move to the next one.
Yep.
I couldn't understand from my pamphlet, where exactly is that thing?
The reservoir, over on PB Drive.
Oh, so it's not, they're not putting a new big tank up here somewhere?
Not in Rolling Hills, no. It'll be at the reservoir.
Okay, that's fine. What is the container size?
It's a container, similar to RPV, yep. Yep. Staff were actively engaged with the tsunami response, and while the incident did not escalate into significant emergency, it provided an important opportunity to practice coordinated response procedures across multiple agencies and jurisdictions. The exercise reinforced the value of regional collaboration and highlighted both operational strengths and areas where communication and notification protocols can be improved. Continuing on with the communication aspect and how it can be probably the most challenging part of any emergency. During the Kenneth Fire, technical error in Los Angeles County's third-party, sorry, a technical error in the Los Angeles County third-party alerting software caused the WIA Alert, the Wireless Emergency Alert, intended for a small evacuation zone to be sent countywide, reaching nearly 10 million people. Although the alert was canceled within minutes, duplicate effort, duplicate and delayed messages continue to circulate, creating public confusion and undermining trust in emergency notifications. A congressional investigation and FCC review found the issue was caused by software safeguards failing, geographic boundaries defaulting to all of Los Angeles County, and technical problems such as equipment overload and the lack of unique alert identifiers. It's important to note that this incident was not connected at all to the Alert South Bay, which operates separately and has its own safeguards.
Any other questions?
I have questions. There's a, which you didn't talk about, it's in your report about a water main leak, and it's at Quail Ridge Lane, but is it south or north?
That was in response to Mr. Visco's letter. There might have been a typo on that, but... Bersh had requested that we would provide some responses to those questions he had asked back in May. That was a result of what happened to that water main leak on Quail Ridge.
My question is only whether it's...
South.
Thank you. South or...
South, that's right.
Okay. And that's important, because it's, obviously, there's two sides of that.
I apologize. Just kidding.
All right, then, we're going to open that piece to the public comments. Is there any public comment?
All right.
Seeing no public comment, we're going to close that public comment. And, all right, so that is the end of the public part. We have a recessed or closed session about lawsuits, et cetera. Oh, we need a receiving file. Someone make a motion?
I'd make a motion, receiving file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks for coming.
You're not going to address any of the concerns about sirens?
8:51.
I'm sorry. Yes, you are.
Okay.
Hold on, let him...
It's, uh...
He needs to report out.
Yeah, it's 9:14, and we, no reportable action taken on the items, the closed session items listed in the agenda.
All right, now media.
No, we, we...